All right, let's call the Board to Order with a moment of silent meditation, please. Okay, can we have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, got to have a motion for adoption agenda.
And Mr. Mayor, we're gonna, we've got one item that we need to remove from the agenda, which is the, it's item nine B, and we're gonna table that discussion since Commissioner Collins is not here and he's the current liaison to the RTAC.
Okay, we're just...
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of item nine B.
Second.
Excellent. There is a motion to second to adoption of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes seem to have it. Have to have a motion for consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Motion second to the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes seem to have it. All right, go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, item five A on your agenda is a proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week, which is May first through the seventh, and I will read the proclamation for you all. It's the fifty-third annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May first through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, international, and professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Manio do recognize the week of May first through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Jamie Whitley and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. This the fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, we're gonna take them individually.
Sure.
Okay. We need a motion on it, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, can we have a motion declaring May the first is silent Municipal Clerks Week?
I make a motion that we declare that May the first through the seventh.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion to second that we declare May the first to sell it to municipal clerks week in honor of Jamie Whitley. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes seem to have it. Motion carries. All right, Melissa.
Okay, the next one is proclamation of National Police Week, May eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Manio Police Department, whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, whereas the names of these dedicated public service are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC, whereas six hundred and nineteen new names of fallen soldier, or fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including four hundred and seventy-two officers killed in two thousand twenty-one and a hundred and forty-seven officers killed in previous years, whereas the service and sacrifice of all of the officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-fourth candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May eleventh through May seventeenth. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of fallen officers, their families and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Manio will observe May eleventh through seventeenth as National Police Week in Manio, North Carolina, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. This the fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, we had to have a motion National Peace Officer Memorial Day in public week, May eleventh, seventeenth. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, there's a second.
Second.
Motion second to the proclamation to police officers made eleventh, seventeenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
On to the next one. Item five C is National, is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. National Public Works Week, May fifteenth through May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The theme is Ready and Resilient, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities in the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Manio, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of Manio to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works first responders and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year two thousand twenty-two marks the sixty-second annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now therefore resolved that the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Manio do hereby designate the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. This the fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-two.
I move to proclaim May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two on behalf of the Town of Manio, the National Public Works Week.
All right, there's a second.
Second.
Motion second, we declare May the fifteenth, twenty-first, Public Works Week. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Melissa?
Yes, sir. Item six A on the agenda is presentation of the recommended budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. And in your, at your desks, you all have a binder that is provided to you that is the entire budget packet, but if you want to follow along, this presentation is under the first blue sheet of paper in your binder. This is the budget presentation for the recommended budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Later in the meeting, the board will vote to set a public hearing on this recommended budget. The documents that have been provided to the board will be available on the website with the public notice of the public hearing for the community to review. First, I'd like to take a look at some of the things that were or will be accomplished in the current two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year budget. So we've got some pictures here. The Davis lot is nearly complete. I stopped by yesterday evening and there were a number of people enjoying the newly improved space. I stopped by again this morning to capture some pictures without people there, and while I was there, Public Works Department was cleaning, they were sweeping Queen Elizabeth Avenue using a piece of new equipment that we purchased with stormwater funds, and I caught a video of Frankie in action on the new sweeper, and it's really, it's really a neat piece of equipment, and you can see before and after how good of a job it does. It is dusty, so the guys wear a face covering while they're on it, but this is, and we're still working out the kinks, but this one of the things that was accomplished this year, and I thought what a great way to start this conversation tonight was to show what we are able to do with the funds you all appropriate. Other objectives that will be accomplished in the fiscal year is meeting an obligation to the North Carolina retirement system to close a gap for recently retired staff. You all will recall that we transferred a vehicle from the Police Department to the Planning Department, which helped provide available funds for the solid waste truck that we will be purchasing from the Town of Kill Devil Hills, and we did submit that offer letter yesterday, and it has been approved, so Frankie is going over to Kill Devil Hills to do a walkthrough with the mechanic over there, and we will be getting that truck very soon, so staff is working on that as we speak. As advertised on the town's website, the Board of Commissioners met on April the seventh, two thousand twenty-two for a budget workshop and priority session. Objectives were identified, and staff have worked to provide a budget that meets those objectives while considering departmental requests from department heads. Objectives that were offered to the staff by the board were updating the town's ordinances, a cost of living adjustment for staff, upgrading playgrounds to include ADA equipment, improvements to Cartwright Park, stormwater engineering for hotspots around town, town hall space assessments and needs, and just a note on that, I did find the old two thousand and twelve space needs assessment, and we'll get that digitally so I can share it with you all. Oh, I have this listed twice. Improvements to the waterfront, planning for a statue of Chief Manio, and a downtown transportation program. Funds have been included to achieve or plan for these objectives offered to staff. Staff recommend the following expenditures: one additional position in public works, licenses for the computer automated dispatch system, this is the CAD system that we are required to keep up with. I mentioned the Dare County Sheriff's transferring over to that, so we need to purchase those licenses, training for new staff, including the Finance Director, the Accounting Technician, Town Planner, and Building Inspector. There's funding to continue progress on the affordable housing project on Sir Walter Raleigh Street, wayfinding, which was funded in this year's budget, but we had all discussed that it was probably better to conduct that when we are a Main Street community, and so we've carried those funds over to this fiscal year. And funds have been included in the recommended budget to achieve these objectives. So on to revenue. These are some highlights for revenue that we've included in this presentation. The revenue projections, this is best news, do not include a tax increase. The tax rate will stay the same at point three, four, five, five cents per a hundred dollars of valuation of assessed property. And then for fees, there are no rate increases that are included in the recommended budget. There are some changes that we've recommended to the fee schedule, which you'll find later in the packet, and those recommendations are, we've updated the marina rates so that they appear more clear. We've just shifted the table around. We've not changed any of those rates, but now it's more easily understood. We added the planning fees to make review fees consistent between trade permits, and then we added a flat seventy-five dollar fee for electrical vehicle charging stations under the electrical permits, and we took the advice in our recommendation to you all and offered a seventy-five dollar fee, which is a bit lower than our typical standard permit fees, but we also suggested that it's a fee per site plan, not per charger. So if someone was building maybe three in a row, they would only be charged the seventy-five dollars, so it's kind of a built-in incentive there for you to consider. We also added a fee for the mini-split HVAC systems that we see more and more permit applications for, and so our suggestion is that it be a hundred dollars for the first indoor and outdoor units that work together, and then if there are additional indoor units, fifty dollars per additional indoor unit. So that includes the revenue and fees highlights. And for the general fund revenue, you can see the breakdown here. The bulk of our revenue is property and vehicle taxes. Shared revenues, shared with the county and other municipalities, is our second highest revenue source. You'll see that we have included a fund balance appropriation. This slide shows a comparison from what is recommended to the current fiscal year. You can see that there are not at all many significant differences. The next graph, oh, this graph, I didn't have a note on this one. This is one we threw in here a little later in the day today. The Board in two thousand thirteen adopted a policy regarding fund balance, and so we thought that it was an interesting thing to show you all. This is, this is related to the fund balance appropriation for each year, so you can see that we are lower than last year, and we've included a copy of that policy for you all. It's the last section of your package.
Melissa, is that the Mayor Daniels, is that derivative of that? I attended the class, but there's weird language on that document.
That's why we provided it. Maybe we can do better. So this graph shows a breakdown by department and compares the current fiscal year with what is recommended. The next, the next slide does the same thing. So Woody, I don't know that I have these in order with the way the graph goes, so maybe if you wanna, as I read through these, switch to the next, because I'm gonna read all of the recommendations that I haven't listed so far. Funds are increased from the current fiscal year for recodification purposes, anticipating the updated town ordinances, so this is in the administration budget. There's an increase in advertising dollars for community and economic development. The Information Technology Department budget includes cloud hosting for new financial software. The Finance Department budget includes increased funding for contracted services to assist with the transition of the financial software, as well as services to assist in identifying process improvements for the Finance Department. There's a new line item in public buildings for Cartwright Park improvements. There doesn't to have appeared to ever be one for Cartwright Park, so we've added one in, and we appropriated some dollars, we've recommended appropriating some dollars in that line item. There are also funds appropriated for continued planning of the affordable housing development on town and property on Sir Walter Raleigh Street. There is an increase in the salary line item for the Police Department as a number of our officers are expected to obtain credentials that will result in required changes to their, their pay classifications. The part-time police line item is increased in order to accommodate an hourly rate increase for our part-time police officers. There are also funds available in salaries and wages line item to create an on-call program for the Police Department. There's an increase in K-9 expenses as we anticipate that our town K-9 officer, Bosco, will retire this year. So we will need to be purchasing and training a new K-9 officer. The capital outlay equipment funding is to upgrade radio equipment. The fire protection contract cost of two hundred thirty-four thousand being recommended is the same as our current budget. Powell Bell funds have been appropriated in anticipation of repair and maintenance of streets and sidewalks. Museum and waterfront marina salary line item was increased to accommodate a small pay increase for the part-time employees for the cost of living adjustment, and for the cost of living adjustment. The condominium fees for the waterfront condos owned by the town increased this year and are reflected in the recommended budget. An additional employee for the Public Works Department has been recommended. Dumpster costs are anticipated to increase, and the line item has been adjusted accordingly. We have kept the funding for landfill disposal the same. The rate that was budgeted in this year's budget is higher than the actual rate at the landfill, so we've kept it the same as we don't have, we haven't heard any word that that is increasing, so we've kept that the same. For the Planning Department, funding is included for the land use plan, and while the land use plan will be adopted in this fiscal year, approval by the Coastal Resources Commission or the CRC will happen in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Funds were increased for the implementation of the twenty-year plan. There are recommended increases in the special events budget for day or day, New Year's Eve, community children events, and due to the timing of the fiscal year end and the July fourth event, a lot of expenditures for July fourth happened in the year prior. So when you look across the line items, it looks like we're recommending less dollars, but that's, that's not actually how it works. It's strange because of having to make those payments in this fiscal year. But I assure you that sufficient funds have been recommended to conduct our July fourth event as standard. The stormwater construction project line item is the same as the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. We are still in the engineering phase for the West Side Stormwater Improvements Project, and we are planning to seek grant funding to offset the construction costs of that project. In addition, there is recommended engineering services identified as hotspots throughout the town. Next to the cemetery fund. The recommended budget includes fifty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars in revenues and was prepared as an operational budget. Expenses for the maintenance of the cemetery are funded through the Public Works Department. A fund balance appropriation of thirty-three thousand seventy-five dollars will be allocated from the cemetery fund balance to fund projects. And there's a breakdown of the expenses for the cemetery. Again, tracking very similar. The water and sewer revenues are meeting obligations for operational budget. A fund balance in the amount of six hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars is recommended to fund projects and improvements included in the departmental budget request. The fund balance appropriation for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is four hundred eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars, less than the current fiscal year. The proposed budget does not include an increase in water and sewer rates. We have successfully submitted and received approval for a state loan to implement ultraviolet disinfection and replace the current standby generator for the wastewater treatment plant as the permit requires. Engineering for this project is included in the next fiscal year budget, and construction will be budgeted for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. That is why you don't see that one point eight million dollar loan showing up in water and sewer this year is because it won't actually happen until the following year. There are several capital improvement, repair, and replacement projects requested in the recommended budget and are available for public inspection. The budget as presented meets its operational needs. It is the goal of the water and sewer administrative staff to continue to provide the best customer service possible. Expenses associated with online bill pay and pay-by-phone options are included in the budget as to not pass these expenses to our customers. As prepared, the recommended budget includes funding for engineering services for a water and sewer main replacement on John Borden Street, partial sewer main and manhole replacement on Devon Street, and a water main looping project servicing Bowser Town Road, Bitifer Street, Fernando Street, and adjacent areas. Many of these projects had been included in this year's budget, but due to the nature of the Shallow Bag Bay project, we thought it was best to hold off and do the engineering for those in this coming year. The figures provided for these projects are estimates. Costs will be determined based on engineering services provided. The long-term goal is to address challenges to help reduce annual costs required to maintain and operate aged portions of the town's water distribution system and control water loss. Smaller projects include sewer line and manhole rehabilitation projects as identified in the capital requests. And so, thank you. I want to offer my deepest appreciation to the mayor and Board of Commissioners for their guidance as we've worked to draft a budget that would provide necessary resources to implement these objectives and address community needs. In addition, I am grateful to the members of the community who have come forward to share their thoughts and ideas. The recommended budget could not have been prepared without the hard work and fast study of Finance Director Heather Doughty, along with Sherri Weskett and Kim Espinoza. All of the town's department heads have worked diligently to provide reasonable departmental budgets during a time of great transition for our staff. A special thanks is offered to the multi-talented Carl Woody for developing the graphs as presented in the budget presentation. Finally, I would like to thank the entire staff at the town for their hard work and dedication in serving the people of the Town of Manio. It is such an honor to work alongside these incredible professionals. So that concludes the budget presentation. Again, these documents are for you all to review, and when you have questions, please ask. They will be available on the website once we post the public notice, which you all will be setting the public hearing a little bit later in the meeting. will be setting the public hearing a little bit later in the meeting. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions? Melissa, now, because we will have a set of budget hearings, I mean, discussion at a later date, but any questions now?
I'll thank you for putting this thank you page in the middle. I thought we were just getting started, you know?
All right, Melissa.
Okay, so next. Item 7A is a public hearing, and the evidentiary public hearing for special use permit for Zero Bowser Town Road. And mayor and commissioners, you all will recall that in this matter, we have conflict counsel, and so Ms. Wambel is here to lead us in this evidentiary hearing, similar to the way Ben led the hearing at your April 6 meeting, I believe. So I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Wambel if you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back here with you this evening. So I'm gonna kinda go through an introduction, give everyone a roadmap. You guys just recently did this, but for members of the public who may not have been here or participated before, this is for everyone's benefit. So tonight, we are here to hold a quasi-judicial hearing, which is an evidentiary hearing, for the board to determine whether or not a special use permit should be issued to MKF Realty Corporation. And again, I'm gonna give you a little summary, and those benefit for the public as well. In this capacity, the board is sitting in a formal quasi, as a formal quasi-judicial board, which is like sitting as a court of law. It's a little different than your normal legislative decisions. Your decisions must be based on substantial competent and material factual evidence presented under oath during this hearing. The board is not strictly bound by the rules of evidence, like hearsay or different objections you might hear in a courtroom, but you are guided by them, by the rules and the general statutes. A testimony by all witnesses, including staff and the applicant, will be given under oath, and all witnesses must go to the podium to identify themselves to give their testimony. The initial parties will be the applicant and the town, and these parties may object, cross-examine the witnesses, present evidence, closing arguments, things of that nature. Additionally, at the end of the hearing, they'll sometimes give an argument summarizing their position or summarizing their request. Absent granting a formal motion to intervene, no members of the general public will be allowed to question witnesses. The general public may be sworn and present some evidence if it's relevant, but they're not gonna be able to participate and object and cross-examine witnesses. Part of the board's role seated as a quasi-judicial board, like a court, is the board members cannot vote or hear or participate in a quasi-judicial hearing if there's a, they have a conflict, or you have to be an impartial decision maker, much like a judge would sit in court. Some of those conflicts would be having a fixed opinion about a hearing or an issue that was coming before you, having undisclosed ex parte communications that you communicated in some fashion about this particular issue that the board isn't, or the public may not be aware of, having a close familial business or other associated relationship with an affected person, or having a financial interest in the outcome of this project. So just as a matter of business, is there anyone on the board who may have any of those conflicts that you're aware of? Usually, I'm warned ahead of time, and I wasn't warned ahead of time tonight, but is there anyone who has any? Perfect. So just as a roadmap for tonight's hearing, first, we're gonna start with staff's presentation. Now, the burden of proof to have the permit received is on the applicant, but it is helpful for the board and everyone involved when staff gives their presentation first. So staff will give their presentation, followed by the applicant, and then the general public if there's anyone, and then both staff and the applicant will be permitted to present rebuttal evidence if there's anything else after the public has gone. And then again, they'll be able to give a little closing argument, if you will, and then the board will move on to deliberation. And you have the ability to postpone your decision if you choose to do so. You can vote tonight to issue the permit, deny the permit, or issue the permit with reasonable conditions. You guys have done this, I'm sure, many times. And so, that's pretty, that's the roadmap. Now, you, part of the special use permit process is the permit application first starts with the planning board, so you're gonna hear about a planning board recommendation tonight, and you can't rely on that planning board recommendation, right? It's relevant for you to hear and consider, but you can't rely on that solely to make your decision about the permit tonight. So if there's not any questions about the procedure, we can get going, and I know staff's probably ready to go. Anybody have any questions? All right, so I would first say we should go ahead and have, we'll go ahead and move on to the hearing, and then if we'll have anyone who's planning to testify to come forward to be sworn.
I'll make a motion to open the evidentiary public hearing for the special use permit for Zero Bowser Town Road.
Second.
Motion, so, just carry a hearing to the matter at hand. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You already had it passed.
All right, I, Melissa Dickerson. This is where, as many are not in here, there's a group, so we didn't have to look at the other side. Thank you. All right. I can't see you when I got my glasses on. Thank you, Attorney Wambel. I have exhibits to enter into the record. Exhibit A will be the special use permit application received from MFK Realty Corporation. Exhibit B will be the site plan proposed. Exhibit C will be the engineer's letter regarding stormwater and the coinciding exhibit. And Exhibit D will be the staff report. Staff have received an application for a special use permit submitted by MKF Realty Corporation. The special use permit application Exhibit A is for a subdivision at Zero Bowser Town Road, which is Dare County Parcel 025542076. The proposed site plan, or Exhibit B, is for an eight-lot subdivision located on Bowser Town Road. Forty-two adjacent property owners were mailed by first-class mail on, adjacent property owner notifications, excuse me, were mailed by first-class mail on February 28th and April 26th of this application. At the time of preparing the staff report, the planning department had not received any phone calls or emails in response to the adjacent property owner notifications. Planning department staff have reviewed the site plan with the following staff members: the town manager, watering sewer director, public works director, building inspector, and fire marshal. As required by the Town and Manio zoning ordinance, Section 3-8D, the planning board is required to review the application for the special use permit and shall submit its recommendations as to approval or disapproval, along with any conditions or safeguards it may consider necessary to the town commissioners. Staff have worked with the property owner and their engineer to resolve a stormwater matter for this property. Attached is a letter staff received from the engineering firm, Albemarle &amp; Associates, that details the plan for stormwater on this site, and that is Exhibit C. The applicant has requested a review by the Preservation and Architectural Review Committee at the appropriate time during the permitting process. At their March 4, 2022 meeting, the planning board, the planning and zoning board made a recommendation of approval of the special use permit application to the board of commissioners. The site plan provided does meet the standards of the ordinance. Public notices of this May 4, 2022 evidentiary hearing were issued on April 17 and April 24, 2022. In addition to the approval of the special use permit, staff suggests consideration of the following possible conditions to the special use permit. Utilities are to be privately owned and maintained by the developers or homeowners. The town's maintenance responsibility will end at the master meter for the water distribution system and the tie-in to the force main for the water collection system. A stormwater permit issued by the state of North Carolina may be required. North Carolina DOT encroachment permit will be required for the driveway/roadway accesses. A lighting plan that is in compliance with applicable ordinances shall be approved by, provided and approved by the planning board. A full and detailed landscape plan in compliance with applicable ordinances could be provided prior to the issuance of any permit. The landscape plan shall be approved by the planning board, that's just language from our ordinance, and then provide an as-built utility site plan. That concludes my remarks.
Mr. Ferry, did you have any questions of staff?
I have none.
Thank you. Did the board have any questions for staff? All right. Thank you. All right, so, there you go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Delucia from Albemarle &amp; Associates, representing MKF Corporation tonight. I think Melissa did a good job presenting everything. We're in agreement with the conditions. It's an eight-lot subdivision, and we'll be working on the stormwater. I did get, all the surveying has been done on the property as far as the location of the existing drainage features and things like that, so we're working to put together the utility and stormwater drawings at this point. I don't have much more to say about that. It looks like it'll be a nice project on Bowser Town Road.
Board have any questions? No? Mr. Ferry, do you care to add to?
I have none, just kind of all kind of, and I, someone did appreciate the leadership of Ms. Dickerson, and the view that she's had, and, or, in town, for addressing some of the housing needs.
All right, and you are in agreement with the recommended conditions by staff?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, did the board have any questions for Mr. Ferry? All right, is there anyone in the public who's here tonight who has any evidence to present? No one else was, came forward to be sworn? All right. It doesn't sound like there's gonna be any closing arguments or any rebuttal evidence because it's all been presented by staff. So at this time, if there's nothing else from staff or the applicant, you can move, if the board doesn't have any other questions, you can move to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move on to deliberation.
I move to close the evidentiary public hearing for special use permit Zero Bowser Town Road.
Second.
Motion to close the evidentiary hearing, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye. The evidentiary hearing is closed.
All right, so at this time, that you, if you have any discussion, deliberation, or if you're ready to have a motion, then you can move forward with a motion.
I move to approve the special use permit for Zero Bowser Town Road.
Okay, and is that with the recommended conditions by staff?
That is with the recommended conditions.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Bowser Town project. Am I right, Lauren?
Yes, sir, that you would approve this special use permit for that project with the conditions recommended by staff.
All right, I won't be accurate. All right, if you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Have a good day.
Yay, housing.
Yay, housing, that's right.
All right, I guess, Melissa, it's up to you.
Yes, sir. Item 8 on your agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board of commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded. And I'm, we are anticipating a public comment from Ms. Benson, and when you want me to flip through your pictures, I will. Okay.
My name is Sarah Benson, 309 Agona Street, Manio, North Carolina. Thank you so much for your support for the Town of Manio litter pickup. And when asked about the big challenge that we had ahead, Barry Wicker said, hey, volunteers that we've got and town staff is in the bag. We had such a good time, and we appreciate the support that each of you have given us over the years, as well as, thank you, Town Manager Melissa Dickerson. And Michelle, she was awesome getting the word out. We had a couple that came from Roper because they read Michelle Bunce's posts. And Frank, and they were med techs that wanted to come volunteer their time. Thank you Frankie Woodley and his staff. Robbie came out and Troy, and they worked so hard as they always do. And as special note, we did not see, catch, or throw out any snakes. We had a lot of new faces, as you can see, and new neighbors came out. We had some new neighbors from the backside of Burnside that came out, Jill Thompson and her husband Ryan that own the new yacht that are gonna be around Shallow Bag Bay, and Tom and Dana that are at Marcia's Light. Sixty-plus volunteers came out. It was a beautiful Outer Banks day. Coastal Fed was in the water. Dunkin' Donuts in front porch, and a big surprise, Damien and his lovely wife, Stuart Weaver from Frosties, brought ice cream for everybody. It was a wonderful time. So thank you so much. We hope to see you all in the fall. The Boy Scouts were there, the Borland family was there, not only representing you commissioners, but representing Go Far. Manio High School students who care about the environment were there, Mount Olivet Youth was there, and the best part was friends and family were there. And as always, we honor Mr. Crowe Murray because he always said at most of the litter pickups that he was at, you know, when our town is clean and shining, we all see it, but we do it for others to see it too. And that's the spirit of Manio. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there other comments? Mr. Mayor, this is a little bit out of turn, but I do wanna say thank you to Sarah, who does an incredible job organizing that event. She reminds us when it's time to put it on the water bill, when it's time to notice it. She is really, the brains behind that whole operation, and she does it out of her dedication and love for the town, so we certainly appreciate Sarah for everything she does, keeping us clean.
I think we're all dying to compliment Ms. Benson for all her efforts, but being in public comment, period, I'm breaking the law myself. So I'm just gonna be quiet, and the board really does appreciate. I wish the board could say something. I shouldn't even be saying it, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
It appears there are no other comments. Mr. Mayor?
All right, if anybody else wanna be heard, we'll close the public comment, period. All right.
Item 9A, under new business, is setting a public hearing for your fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. 2023 budget.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget for May 18 at 5:00 p.m.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion, a second to set the hearing for the 22, 23 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye to have it. We'll set the public hearing. Melissa, it's up to you.
The next item on your agenda, Mr. Mayor, is mayor and commissioner comments.
We're not gonna set the hearing tonight.
Oh, didn't y'all just do that?
We just did it.
We have?
Yep.
Maybe too. Eddie did it.
Okay. I don't have anything. Eddie?
Again, like I go, the mayor, thank you, Ms. Benson, Benson family, and everybody that came out. I think your representation of why this town is great, not, you know, because of the location, but also because of our community members like you, so thank you very much.
Jason?
Yeah, obviously, I'll echo that. It's a great event out there, and it's, you know, it's a it's fun, too. The kids were running around, had a had a great time, and I didn't see any snakes, so that means I had a good time. And it's contagious, too, which will let me segue into the next thing I'm gonna say, but my kids said, you know, maybe we could do this when we move, and but we will be moving this summer. And so, you know, I think it's appropriate, after we close up some business and finalize the budget, to step down once we get through that order of business, and that should be the June regular meeting, pending anything crazy going on, so, you know, I won't do any kind of drag it out too much, but that's 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 my intention, and, you know, it's kind of been out there, most people know it, but I haven't formally said anything, which has driven you nuts, I know. I haven't been able to write anything about it yet, but here we are. It's been one of my greatest pleasures, and I've enjoyed it, and it's been a great. There's no better community. I won't say we're moving home, because this feels more like home than anything, but yeah, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Jason. It's your call. Sherri?
Oh, well, the first thing I would like to say is, of course, thank you, Sarah, for upholding that tradition that was started, but also your enthusiasm for this community. You're the one one of the reasons many people are here, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And you, Jason Borland, are gonna be very missed. Your contributions have been wonderful. Your perspectives are always so well-thought-out. I have really appreciated hearing you and being able to connect with you as a commissioner, and now as a face-to-face as a commissioner, so I am very saddened that you're going to be leaving this community, but you have really done a wonderful job. Thank you. The only other thing I wanted to say was so happy about the Davis Lot. I I really love that tribute to water, as you see the it's like a river taking you right to the water, and it's such a welcome surprise between these it's unexpected in between these two buildings to find this beautiful place that will lead you right to a wonderful visual, and that's the water and, of course, the Elizabeth II. So I really love how that's turning out.
Thank you.
Ms. Jane?
Ms. Sarah, I get to see you serve this community in so many ways. I I wish I had your energy. It's unbelievable. When I first met you, I thought, God, is this an angel? Because she was just floating around doing all these miscellaneous tasks, and she just she does so much in the church. You're you are a blessing. Jason, you've been so generous with your time. It's rare to meet somebody that's as busy as you are, but also as willing to give of his time to young people, strangers, families. He spoke at our youth group on Sunday. The Saturday before, he was roasted by a bunch of Girl Scouts, where he taught them about credit scores and retirement. So you you're you're very unique, your whole family. I love your wife. I'm gonna miss your kids dearly. I hope and pray one day that you will return, and this will be your retirement place, so thank you. It has been a pleasure to serve alongside you. Oh, my one other question was, don't we have a citizen of the year thing? We used to, pre-COVID.
At our dear days.
At dear days, yeah. Is that still a tradition?
It is.
Yes, so we will, at the mid-month meeting, have that. That's a very good point. We will take care of that. Okay. That's all.
Betty?
Not much more for me to say, but I echo, thank you, Sarah. And I will add Sarah Hulman, because, you know, he gives his time to his wife, so thank you so much.
That it?
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we haven't we will recess until win, Jane. May 18? We will recess May 18 at 5:00, and we have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion seconded. We have a recess, a working meeting made or whatever. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.